Okay, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, February 26, six o'clock PM, 6:02 PM. This is the time that's been set aside for what we have always sort of colloquially called pre-town meeting meeting. For those on television who may not know, I'm Paul Samino, I'm the Town Moderator, and we are here to run through the warrant for annual town meeting, which is scheduled for Saturday, March 23rd, at one o'clock PM in the afternoon. That's redundant, 1:00 PM, and running through to 5:00 PM, and then reconvening at 7:00 and going to 11:00. Before we do anything substantive tonight, the Board of Selectmen are here, they have a quorum, so they have posted a meeting, and I'll have them gavel themselves in. Ms. Brascio.
Thank you, Mr. Samino. Calling the Board of Selectmen's meeting to order Tuesday, February 26, 2019, 6:00 PM, McCalliff Hearing Room. Thank you.
Thank you. We have the Chair of the Advisory Committee here. There is not a quorum of advisory here as of yet. If that, if they do have a posted meeting as well, and if they reach a quorum at some point tonight, I will pause to allow Ms. Cook to convene her meeting as well. Town Council is here to assist with the review of the warrant, and particularly any questions regarding the quantum of vote and the reason for that, if something deviates from the majority. And as we run through individual line items, if there is a question about presentation for the article sponsor, we'll talk about what to expect and how long. So with that, I will start the run-through. Article 1 is to hear committee reports, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Purple, please advise, to the extent you're aware, what, if any, committee reports folks are looking to present.
Mr. Moderator, I was copied on an email from the library director. I believe library wants a few moments just to talk about their programs and things going on at the library, and then also a request from Jason Malinowski, Chair of the Public Safety Building Committee, just to give an update on the public safety project. So those are the only two I'm aware of.
Okay, I did get, I did receive correspondence from Mr. Donovan. He has, in that correspondence, promised to limit his presentation to very few minutes, under five minutes, three minutes, actually. I don't know if Mr. Malinowski has indicated what he's looking for in that regard, in terms of length?
I think he's intending to be fairly brief.
Okay. Ms. Gillespie, you are at the podium, is that because you want to speak to this one?
Yes, I had a question on when you have to be notified by, and, two, sometimes before the meeting starts, you have pictures up on the screen while people, while you're waiting for a quorum. Is that something that could be done instead of an annual report? And/or when do you have to be notified about doing some sort of committee report? Not an annual report.
So, so, let me understand, so you're, you're asking, I mean, just pictures for atmosphere, or specific to projects that you're, you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, instead of having to take time from the annual town meeting while people are, you know?
Yeah, while people are gathering.
It could be a way of getting information out that the Open Space Preservation Commission may wish to provide, because we haven't taken a vote on it, so I'm saying "may," to explain one of our new major initiatives in town, and it would just not need someone talking, but, you know, maybe just, you could do some, like a little slideshow.
I don't have any objection to that, although I would say that could quickly get out of hand if, if, once, once people realize that's happening, you know, I may get a lot of requests for something like that. So we'll play that one by ear. But when is your next meeting? That you said you have, you still have votes to take, is that what you were saying?
Yeah, that needs to be determined before, sometime before annual.
So you don't have a meeting date?
It's difficult.
Okay.
But if I knew a deadline, I could try to come up with something, and if you prefer a presentation, we can go with that, if we so decide.
You know, I don't have a preference, obviously, the idea is to get through the town's business as expeditiously as possible, but I'm speaking with the town's IT Director, Tom Laflamme, shortly about how we're going to put together what goes on the screen, so let me get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Like I said, I don't know for sure, but just wanted to keep our options open.
Okay. Are you sticking around, I mean, when we talk, so, for when we talk about 19 through 23, 24?
I'm here for the duration.
Okay, thank you. Anything, questions, anything else about Article 1? Article 2, Acceptance of Pilot Payments. I'm going to run through the Selectmen-sponsored articles, and anybody could stop me if they need to, need to, but I understand that there isn't any article that the Selectmen intend to present on, which is typical. Article 3, Annual Borrowing Authorization. Article 4, Authorization of Bond Premiums for Capital. Article 5, Application of Bond Premiums to Capital. Article 6, Authorization of Contracts in Excess of Three Years. Article 7, Salary Administration Plan. I see the Chair of the Personnel Board is here. Ms. Rosenbloom, what's your pleasure on that? Do you need to make a presentation, or will you just move the article at the microphone?
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, thank you. Betsy Rosenbloom, Chair of the Personnel Board. It was the sense of the board that we would just move the question, and answer any questions.
Okay. Terrific.
In light of the reality, and I won't get paid by the minute this year.
You mean, you make the same as the rest of us? Thank you. Back to Selectmen's articles. Article 8, Establish Water Enterprise Fund. Article 9, Approve Union Agreements. Article 10, Fiscal Year 2019 Budget Adjustments.
Mr. Moderator, there is, you'll notice that there is not a lot of detail with that at this point. The finance team is still putting that together. There will be something for this article, so it's not going to be something, in previous years, we've passed over this, because we haven't had any transfers to make, but there are going to be a couple of transfers, and once we get a little bit closer to town meeting, we'll have that, too.
So there will be a motion and a vote?
That's correct.
But, but not a presentation?
No, no presentation.
Okay. Article 11, Fiscal Year 2020 Operating Budget. Obviously, we will move through the budget as we always have. I don't know whether the Selectmen or advisory have anything in particular to present for this year's budget, other than the usual process where we go through each line? Ms. Cook?
Kathy Cook, I'm Chair of Advisory. So Advisory, will do their normal written report, but we are also, I believe, are going to present a, or make a presentation that is going to talk about this year's budget, but also the next three years' budget. We're going to show the town what we think is going to happen the next three years because of the new debt, which there's a lot of discussion about, and a lot of misinformation about. So yes, we are going to do a little bit different type of presentation than we normally do.
That being probably one of the most important ones we'll have that evening, or that day.
I think so, too.
I, I wonder if you have a sense of, of time? I'm not inclined to limit you to three minutes, like I will with most others, three to five, so.
Three to five, that's what you're hoping?
No, I'm saying for this one, if you need longer, we'll, we'll go longer, not much longer.
I don't think it's three to five, but I don't think it's 20 either, so can we say 10 to 15?
Let's shoot for 10.
Okay, I can talk fast.
But that, that is clearly something that town meeting needs to understand as well as possible. Mr. Purple, anything separate from the Selectmen on that, in terms of a presentation?
So I, I think Mr. Ballantyne and I will just have a brief presentation, as we've had for the past number of years, just to kind of give the highlights, quick overview. We'll try to limit it to five minutes.
A question, Mr. Samino?
Yes, Ms. Fenn.
I'm just curious, will the town administrator and Mrs. Cook share their information between each other, so if there's discrepancies, we'll be aware of them?
Yeah, I, I've had a brief conversation with, with Ms. Cook, and so I, we're not going to do, there's not going to be anything that's going to be redundant or anything, and it'll be different information.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else on Article 11? Article 12, Fiscal Year 2020 Water Budget. Article 13, Capital Budget Non-Borrowing. Article 14, Payment to Retirees for Accrued Vacation and Sick Time. Article 15, Capital Maintenance Fund. Article 16, Bylaw Golf Course Revolving Fund. Up to this point, all of the, all of the articles have a, a voting quantum of just a simple majority. Is that also true of Article 16, Council?
No, Article 16, General Bylaws, is going to be my, my majority. What I should tell you, in the prior article, there are several funding possibilities. One is borrowing.
You're talking about 15 or 16?
15.
Okay.
I don't know, was the motion?
No, we never borrow, we never.
Well, it says borrow.
I'm sorry.
Ah, the vote, well, the motion is.
The motion?
Motion's raised inappropriate.
All right, so that is all, all right, so that's majority. How you do it?
Okay.
So, sorry, just for clarification, I'm sorry to go backwards, Paul. Article 8, Establishing the Enterprise Fund, Water Enterprise Fund, is that also?
Majority, that is majority. And I should tell you that there is a, just for clarification, Article 4, which has to do with the ability to use bond funds for capital cost projects, no quantum of vote was specified. This was an amendment under the Modernization Act, and because of that, that is also majority. That might be confusing for some, but it is majority.
If that comes up, I will throw it right over to you.
All right, and just contingency planning, in the event that for some reason Article 8 does not pass, Article 12 would fund, is, is the water budget. As written, it's for the Water Enterprise Fund. Would we need to amend that article to continue with water budget as we have traditionally? Or, I guess, this is all written, and with the assumption that the Water Enterprise Fund article passes. If for some reason it does not pass, how do we provide water?
So if, if, if that, so, I'll give it a go, and then Council can correct me. But I would, my understanding would be if that article fails, then we are going to need to amend Article 11, and reinsert the water budget back into the general fund operating budget.
I just want to be prepared, so we're not scrambling on that Saturday.
No, that's, that's the point of pre-town meeting, is to, is to shake out those issues.
Yeah. Mr. Shea, any, but I don't hear you saying you have reason to believe that Article 8 is controversial, or?
I have no reason, I have no reason to believe, but I've seen stranger things happen at town meetings as well, so I just want to be prepared.
Okay. So on Article 15, then, the warrant uses the word borrowing, and we gonna, we're going to fix that, is that?
No, the, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. The motion, it's been pointed out to me that the motion is not going to be borrowing.
So I'm looking at the motion summary document, it does say raise inappropriate in the motion, so I don't know if the.
Correct.
The actual warrant said something different, or?
So, so the warrant, the warrant article.
Why do we stop on this?
The warrant article gives you your options, Mr. Moderator?
Yeah.
And allows you to borrow, raise inappropriate, or transfer from other available funds usually. The motion is where you define what you're actually going to do based on, now, historically, we've always raised inappropriate, we've never borrowed for this article. The warrant goes to print in the morning.
Okay.
If it, I don't think it makes a difference, because like I said, the motion, the Council can opine, but the motion is what drives the article.
It does.
Yes. Bear with me. Okay, so, back to 16, then, Bylaw Golf Course Revolving Fund, so the bylaw nevertheless is a simple majority?
General bylaw, simple majority, correct.
Okay. Article 17, Annual Authorization of Revolving Funds. Article 18, Accept Deed of Conveyance for Zero Kimberly Lane. And this being an interest in real estate, that's a two-thirds.
This is a two-thirds vote, this is a acceptance of a deed in lieu of tax foreclosure. This came up once before, but the, the property owner decided to, to not want it to be considered. This is the second time in, at the town's expense, so the town administrator required an agreement contingent upon the town meeting vote, to ensure that it would go forward, or we would foreclose the property. And that's, that has occurred, that document has been received.
Whoever present, whoever makes that motion for Selectmen should probably make that little three-sentence summary, just to explain why it's back.
Sure.
All right. Articles 19 through 24 are CPA-related article. I'll just, I'll read through them real quick, Ms. Gillespie, and then if you want to speak about what your intentions or desires might be in regards to information. Article 19, CPA Administrative. Article 20, Burnett House Bond. Article 21, Halloran Property Bond. Article 22, Library Façade Restoration Project. Article 23, Preservation of Civil War Flag. Article 24, Invasive Species Removal. This is a good time, this isn't directed generally at CPA, but a good time now, as we look at the rest of the warrant, 19 through 35. You know, I've encouraged in the past, and I, and I will again, for those who are, again, whether it's CPA, whether it's new bylaws, whether it's citizens petition, to do as much of your educating of the public as you can, prior to town meeting. At this point in the, in the process, at this annual town meeting, we may be into the evening session, we may have restless folks in the audience, I just want to make sure that, you know, you feel you've, all, all of the sponsors of Articles 19 through 35 have done their utmost to educate the voters prior to actually arriving that night. With that being said, Ms. Gillespie, what are your thoughts on your CPA articles?
As always, Articles, where do we start, 19?
You are 19 through 24.
Okay, so 19, 20, and 21, we'll just read and vote. 22, 23, 24 are projects, and there's no way I can not have a small presentation. We tell people to be as quick as possible, but particularly because they are uniquely CPA articles with project proponents, we can't guarantee what the project proponents do to propose, to, to promote these, and we certainly don't have the bandwidth to, with all the other work on our plate, to go out and have presentations on all our warrant articles.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not suggesting that. So, so, so for, so for, for the folks who don't know, can you just identify, then, for example, the, the proponent, I can guess, but the proponent of the library facade restoration is?
The library.
Okay. And preservation of civil war flag?
It's a, there's more to it than that, but that's the historical society, and that's all written in the warrant article, who the project is under.
Okay.
And for Article 24, that's the Open Space Preservation Commission.
Okay.
I will let people know that we are going to be doing a presentation in front of the Selectmen on the 5th, and, again, that's been, I've advised, it has to be very short, we're looking at two to three slides, three to, really, maybe five at the tops, if they're talking really fast, but nothing prolonged, and certainly nothing longer than that at annual town meeting.
Sure, sure, and I don't, I don't intend to suggest that, you know, we have three minutes to dwell on something, and then we're going to go right to a vote. Obviously, there may be questions, there may be discussion, debate, all of that will take place, I just, my concern is with the initial presentation, in terms of laying something on town meeting floor, is, and I, and I appreciate what you're saying about the fact that the community preservation commission, or committee, is not the one that are going to be making these presentations, I understand that.
But to be clear, the CPC brings forth the article.
I understand that as well.
And they have to, sort of, how do I say this? We, we, we advise them on what they should be doing.
Yes.
As far as time, and.
Yes.
We have advised, sure.
Okay. Okay.
We would actually tell them to skip unless it looks like a problem, and, but we can't do that, so.
Understood, understood. So I'll, I will follow up with the library historical and OS.
No, no, we follow up. You can tell me what you need them to do, but it's our warrant article.
All right, I, so, so that's fair enough, so, so if, if, if you could let me know who specifically, like an individual, is going to speak to 22, 23, and 24?
Okay.
And whether or not they intend to make an actual presentation versus just speaking to it at the microphone?
All right, and when do you need presentations by?
If you could let me know, well, let's get the, let me, let me understand whether there's going to be one, and then, I have, I don't have a deadline for presentations yet, we're still a ways out, but if you could let me know the answer to who's doing it, and whether they're doing a presentation by the end of the week, is that fair?
Yeah, I can pretty much guarantee you're going to have three presentations, but I will confirm.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hegarty?
Mr. Samino, I'm Hegarty Town Clerk, I'd like to comment on Articles 22, 23, and 24. There's language in these that is new, that has never been in an article before, and there's been no, nobody from the CPC has mentioned any to us about this. I wanted to draw your attention to the last paragraph of Article 22. My point, it says, as presented documents and blah, 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 as documented in the application and signed memorandum, understanding on file with the town clerk's office. Nothing has been filed with us, and I caution that we're telling the public that this information is on file with the clerk's office, so the public has a right to come in to examine this before the town meeting, yet nothing has been presented to us. So this needs to get to us in a reasonable time, so the public has a right to do this. I would also, when the town has acceptance of private ways, the same kind of a thing with DPW, the map is on file in the clerk's office, so the public has a right to look at it. So just, this stuff, CPC has to get this stuff to us quickly, so that we can have, the public has a right to examine it.
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. Town Council, please.
Town Clerk is absolutely correct, and that is the, the standard, which is acceptance plans for the public's ability to see, so anytime it is indicated that something is on file, it really has to get on file sometime early on in the warrant process. I would say at this point, those that memor, I, I asked myself about it, because I never received a copy, so I would think that that should be on file, not later than the beginning of next week.
Ms. Gillespie, you want to speak to that?
I do. I appreciate this input. We know it's something new, you know, there, this, this situation arose because we had people coming to us, doing presentations with their application, projects being approved, going to town meeting, and because we didn't, you can't write every little detail in the warrant article, and then people going out and doing projects that had very different scopes than what had been presented and voted on, but because it didn't specifically say that in the warrant article, we thought this was a better way to proceed, and we may have had a misstep here. I certainly thought as long as it was available by, I shouldn't say "I," the committee felt, as long as it was available by town meeting. And I'm not sure how to correct that, because I don't think I'm going to have it done by Monday. We actually were going to ask for a town council's opinion, and if that doesn't work, I'm not sure what your advice is. We wanted his opinion also on the, the language in the, in the MOUs. We've never done it before, and another problem we've been faced, as town administrators are aware, with an early moved-up timeframe, getting projects, budgets, like a week after our warrant articles were due, trying to get the warrant articles in, it's been extremely difficult, to say the least, and the MOU has to be defined now with the project applicant and the CPC agreeing on it, and then sending it to town clerk. We want to do that because we think the town people should know what they're voting to, to fund, and not end up with something less or different than what has been approved through our process, and then what was presented at town meeting. However, we certainly don't want to be out of line with what has to be done, and if we'd had more time, we would have, this was a solution we came up with to problems that arose more recently that we became aware of, so.
So, through the, through the Chair, I'd like to ask Town Council about, you know, it sounds like, let's posit that these materials are not available at the clerk's office by early next week, or maybe not even before town meeting, based on what I just heard, do we, do we amend? at it, so just, this stuff, CPC has to get this stuff to us quickly, so that we can have, the public has a right to examine it.
Mr. Moderator?
Go ahead, Mr. Town Council, please.
Town Clerk is absolutely correct, and that is the standard, which is acceptance plans for the public's ability to see, so anytime it is indicated that something is on file, it really has to get on file sometime early on in the warrant process. I would say at this point, those that memor, I asked myself about it, because I never received a copy, so I would think that that should be on file, not later than the beginning of next week.
Ms. Gillespie, you want to speak to that?
I do. I appreciate this input, we know it's something new, you know, this situation arose because we had people coming to us, doing presentations with their application, projects being approved, going to town meeting, and because we didn't, you can't write every little detail in the warrant article, and then people going out and doing projects that had very different scopes than what had been presented and voted on, but because it didn't specifically say that in the warrant article, we thought this was a better way to proceed, and we may have had a misstep here, I certainly thought as long as it was available by, I shouldn't say "I," the committee felt, as long as it was available by town meeting. And I'm not sure how to correct that, because I don't think I'm going to have it done by Monday, we actually were going to ask for town council's opinion, and if that doesn't work, I'm not sure what your advice is. We wanted his opinion also on the language in the MOUs, we've never done it before, and another problem we've been faced, as town administrators are aware, with an early moved-up timeframe, getting projects, budgets, like a week after our warrant articles were due, trying to get the warrant articles in, it's been extremely difficult, to say the least, and the MOU has to be defined now with the project applicant and the CPC agreeing on it, and then sending it to town clerk. We want to do that because we think the town people should know what they're voting to fund, and not end up with something less or different than what has been approved through our process, and then what was presented at town meeting. However, we certainly don't want to be out of line with what has to be done, and if we'd had more time, we would have, this was a solution we came up with to problems that arose more recently that we became aware of, so.
So through the chair, I'd like to ask town council about, you know, it sounds like, let's posit that these materials are not available at the clerk's office by early next week, or maybe not even before town meeting, based on what I just heard, do we amend, do we edit the language of the articles before we print the warrant?
It was wise to put that language in there about it being on file. It seems like the contingent to filing it with the town clerk's office is my review. May I ask, when do you think a document would be available for my review, because we'll expedite it?
So, we have a nine-member committee of only, which seven are seated, we need five for a meeting, and I don't know if anyone else knows what it's like to get five members of seven to find a night they can all meet, and I'm working on that. We have a scheduled meeting, I believe it's the fourteenth, tentative, and I'm waiting So we can, I think the alternative is pulling all the warrant articles? I can't, I don't have the authority to pull that, I don't believe, to pull that out of the warrant before it goes to print, I'm just one member of a committee.
I would, we, we're not suggesting you need to do that, this is a simple issue of the availability of this document, which it was wise to put it in there, as I said, because you're basically letting the public at large know, but to have the warrant respectfully at this juncture of review, I need to review it quickly, and the town clerk needs it on file as soon as possible, because his concern, I'm sure, is the fact that residents will come in and say, "I want to see the memorandum of agreement," and he's going to say, "I don't have any," then why is it in the warrant as an indicating that you have it on file? So how do we work together to get that done, because I'll help you, but...
I can try this, I think, I'm comfortable with changing the language, the MOU will be available at town meeting later to be on file with the town clerk for this year, and then next year we'll do it better. Does that work?
It's not the best resolution, what you put into this warrant article was the best approach.
But I'll just defend that thinking, is that most people go to town meeting, and it's the first they've heard of any of these warrant articles, and to have it on the table along with the warrant could satisfy, like in the past, people didn't even know what the project was until we talked about it on town meeting floor, this will be something more writ, something more, better documented, available at town meeting, and, because I don't want to put the town clerk or town council, it's still, I understand for town council, it is going to be a rush to review it before town meeting, and I'm sorry about that.
That's okay, we'll do that, I mean, it's too important, we'll do that. If you choose to delete the reference in here, we'll still have it reviewed by town meeting, and then you just, the other option is, you would have to explain what that is, what the memorandum is, even though it's not in the warrant article, you could simply say that there is a memorandum that has been reviewed by council, and the memorandum does this, and that's in support of the article.
Well, no, I thought the memo, sorry, I thought the warrant article could state that there will be an MOU instead of on file with the town clerk's office, when it goes to print, it could state, will be available at town meeting and filed at the town clerk's office with our minutes or some such thing.
After the fact, that's too cumbersome.
Ms. Fannin?
I guess I'm kind of puzzled here, if there was an application, and it's completed, and it complies with the details of the members of the CPC and documented, you've already agreed, so why couldn't you have a signed document now, if you've agreed to present this warrant article, and the parties agree, and the application is in, billed and completed to the standards required? To me, that's the same thing, why aren't both parties just signing?
Well, first, we have to draft it and agree what's in it, there's a lot of things that are discussed during the application, and some committees need to go back, you had one person presenting to the CPC, and they're representative of board that needs to take a vote, as I've come to learn, nothing is as simple as one wishes it could be or would be.
I understand that, but, so right now CPC has not officially voted to support these articles, because you don't have a completed document, that's what you're saying.
No, no, every year, we review the application, we get an application, we review, we sometimes have the applicants come in three or four times, you know, because we work with them when they don't have it quite right, by the end, we have an agreed-upon project. However, once it goes to town meeting and it's voted on, some of those agreements are not specifically nailed down, and it becomes an issue, and we don't have the authority, you know, it becomes, well, you said this, and no, we said that, we want it written out.
Well, I'm, I'm not comfortable with this process, and I'd say I'd like to have a completed document by the fifth, when we meet next, when the Board of Selectmen is meeting.
And if I can't do that, then we pull the articles, is I think what our options are. If I don't have a meet...
In order for the community to be prepared for town meeting and have a warrant that states what is happening at a town meeting, all the information should be ready and out there by ten days before town meeting.
Sure, we, none of us wanted to be talking about this tonight. I don't have an answer here, I don't see how I can do it by Monday, today is Tuesday, I can't even post a meeting if I could even get a quorum, and I can't guarantee that the other folks are going to be available to sign it, so I'm sorry we've created such a Pandora's Box. The intention was to provide better information to the residents, the timing has been horrendous, and...
Yeah, I hear, I think, as town council has said, I think the intention was absolutely correct, in other words, if I understood you, Ms. Gillespie, you've got proponents of these articles who need to commit, who need to put details on paper for the whole town to see, and have available for reference in the future, when these projects actually get executed, that they get executed in the manner in which they were committed to in the first place, is sort of the abstract of what the intention, as I understand it, was here, and if we don't have that yet, we don't have that written commitment, you know, for over a million dollars' worth of funding, then maybe we are, and it's, I'm not saying it's anybody's fault, because we do have a compressed calendar this year with town meeting being moved up a month, then maybe we aren't ready to bring these to the floor.
Well, I will say, we've spent many millions over the years on CPA projects without this level of commitment.
Yes.
And...
Could I ask the chair lady, do you have the application before the...
We have applications.
Do you have the application that's referenced here? All right, is it physically before the...
Right, but the details, the devil's in the details, right? The details of what is agreed upon.
Right, it hasn't been...
Is not always in the application, it happens throughout the process, and what we approve in the dollar amounts.
But physically, you have the application.
Physically, we do, but...
Yes.
But not the MOU, council, as...
Some of the applications...
Hey, I'm going to try to see if I can save the...
Okay, some of the applications may have been revised since we looked at them, without them revising all the information as agreed upon in writing.
See if this makes factual sense, project to be completed in conformance with details as presented to the members of the CPC, and to be documented in an application and subsequent memorandum of understanding, period. You're alerting the public as to what's going to happen, but they're not ready yet.
So the application, you could say, in the application, doesn't need to be, because we do have applications.
Yep.
But the MOU to be.
Right, it would say in effect, to be documented in the application and subsequent memorandum of understanding, period.
Okay.
So it's not a document in existence, the public knows about it, and in case later, if it passes, they want to know something more about it, it's available, and you save your article.
Okay, and then for next year, we can be more proactive and communicate with town clerk and you ahead of time?
That, that's...
And that MOU, we will want your input on, making sure it...
Absolutely.
Okay, is that a, Bonnie?
I would suggest that you put the applications out there for view, for the public.
Okay.
I'll get it from you.
It's a starting point, it's not the finish, but it's what they're talking, what we're talking about as a community.
And we're just trying to make this a better, cleaner, everyone knows what's expected of them.
Sure.
And the last quick point is that that's legal, we're just playing with grammatical words, we're not changing intent, so you don't need a vote of your...
No, I'm comfortable with, I just never like to say as one person, I can make decisions for the committee, and I'm sure that, rather than pulling the warrant article, that this is a good solution.
Very good.
Can we be explicit, as folks may wish, that the funding itself is contingent upon the finalization of the memorandum of understanding that's to come?
I'm a little nervous about using that word contingent anywhere, as I've been educated.
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, and I can let the finance director speak to this, but especially with Article twenty-two, since it's a borrowing article, this has been reviewed by bond council, and there are certain things that...
Yeah, let me be a little more clear, I apologize, I don't mean that the budgetary, I don't mean that the budget is contingent, you know, the amount in the budget is contingent, what I mean is the funds don't get released until the proponent has followed through.
We have the language that says, at the bottom of that, all funds at the discretion of the Community Preservation Committee.
I see that.
But I don't think that gives us permission not to fund something that town meeting has...
That changes.
Approved, but if it's not what, because it's not what we think town meeting approved, or what...
My only concern, look, just to be very clear, my only concern is you have a proponent who has an obligation to do an MOU, but town meeting votes to support the project, so their incentive to follow through on a detailed MOU is out the window, unless I'm mistaken, which I very well may be.
Well, let me ask, this MOU will be done before town meeting, can we, do we have the authority to pull an article on town meeting floor?
Well, you have the authority not to, just not to move it, you can move to indefinitely postpone.
So we can do that, I mean, that gives me level, like either we're in agreement, which we, let me be clear, there is no disagreement between the project proponents and the CPC, this is just a new process moving forward to prevent future problems, so...
Yes.
I can't imagine that they're not going to be willing to work with us, all the project proponents, and get this signed before town meeting, and then we can just, we do have the pulling the warrant article or not reading it as a fallback.
Okay, if we make the language changes you've suggested, council, but then, to be documented, but if by then it actually is, we can just make note of that on the floor, I would think.
You can, and I believe that the warrant is going in tomorrow, so that change is going to be given tonight, all right.
So we will say to be documented, but to your point, the intention is to have it documented by town meeting, so that works, council, correct?
We can take all reference to town clerk off there, and then see how that goes next year.
Yes.
It will be with our minutes.
Out of each article, yeah.
Pardon?
Out of each article, you're going to remove it from each article, the reference to town clerk.
This whole conversation is not specific to any one article.
It's all the CPC.
So we'll remove reference to being on file with the clerk, and we will also indicate that it's to be documented with the intention that it actually will be documented by town meeting.
And...
Is what I'm, that's what I'm hearing.
I'll get a copy of that before it goes to print, or that language.
If you hang around.
I am hanging around at your discretion, I appreciate the time you've provided for this conversation, thank you.
All right, Mr. Hegarty, I appreciate you raising that, yes, sir.
Tim Lit, I don't want to prolong this, but just an observation, it seems to me that the MOUs that you're talking about are memorializing agreements that were made in the committee meetings, so the essence of those ought to be in the minutes of those meetings, and, you know, why not refer to them?
That's not up to me, I'll let you take that one, I mean, it just strikes me that, you know, relying on minutes to do a detailed documentation of a legal agreement, that's not, that's not a good practice.
I appreciate that, but the whole theory is that the certain documents as part of the town warrant are duly on file with the town clerk, that's the official legal thing that has to happen, that's almost like second string, second string resolution, so I think we're okay.
And just to state, that would require someone searching through maybe six months' worth of minutes to find the precise agreements that are going to be in the MOU, so it's not, that's something we want people to have to do, thanks.
Moving on.
Anything else on CPA-related articles, nineteen through twenty-four? Okay, Article twenty-five, bylaw, annual town meeting, selectmen, I assume that's a motion, but not necessarily a presentation, as Mr. Purple has indicated. Article twenty-six, bylaw, amend the demolition delay, my understanding from speaking with Mr. Hubley is this is an extremely ministerial change of a time period from fifteen to forty-five days, it doesn't strike me as a presentation-type thing, and I'll assume there is none. Counsel, you looking at that, or you, okay?
I'm sorry.
Okay. Article twenty-seven, bylaw, meetings on election day, Mr. Hegarty, any need to present on that? Thank you. Article twenty-eight, bylaw, public trees, Mr. Morris, please, sir.
Evening, Don Morris, Planning Board, I'll be the, I'll be the one that presents it, presents the article, and we will have, we have eight slides right now, and those slides came from the, the format came from the Tree City USA program.
Are those available now, have they been fine-tuned and can be posted, if you have them? Not quite yet?
No, we have them.
Okay.
Yeah, you want a copy?
No, 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 I just, I would encourage you to make them available to the public generally as soon as possible, so running through those eight slides, in terms of timing, do you think?
We think the presentation, you know, the, the stating of the warrant article and the presentation would be, should be way under five minutes.
Okay, terrific, anybody else?
So on March fifth, will we present in a similar fashion that we would on March twenty-third?
Yes.
And who do we get the slides to?
Mr. Purple, please.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Okay, Articles twenty-nine, thirty-two, thirty-three, and thirty-four are proposed by Karen Hanlon, who I do not see, Mr. Purple, any word in that regard from Ms. Hanlon, in terms of her intentions in...
No.
Presenting the articles?
I don't have anything, Mr. Moderator.
All right, Ms. Hanlon, if you're watching, I'll re-encourage you to educate the public in advance, we will keep presentations limited. Article, anything else on those? Article thirty, citizen petition, recreational resources committee, that's proposed by Mr. Barron, sir, please.
Good evening, I'd like probably about five minutes to present this article, and I do have a webpage with some slides that I'd like to be able to show on the screen to explain to the townspeople about the article and seek their vote.
Okay, five-minute presentation is fine, we'll be sending out information a little bit later, as we get closer, in terms of where to send the materials, so we can get them compiled and ready for, ready for the big screen.
Okay, thank you, any questions from any members? Thank you.
Okay, thanks, sir. Article thirty-one, citizens petition for board attendance, I actually received... I actually received an email from Mr. Wyshin earlier today. I thought I did. Did you get that one, Mr. Purple?
I did not.
Well, I don't have it to refer to now. I don't, I don't anticipate any presentation on this. Again, the substance of the article is fairly straightforward. It's easy to understand. And so, Mr. Wyshin, if you're watching, please let me know if you disagree. Lastly, for tonight, Article 35, citizens' petition, pilot agreements, Patricia Burns-Fiori. Ma'am. Hello. So the only question I have for tonight is, do you intend or do you desire to make a presentation to town meeting regarding your article?
Yes.
Can we keep it to five minutes or less?
Yes.
Okay. You'll hear more about where to send that. Mr. Hegarty, do you have something on this? You look like you're, no, you just want to go back to work. Anybody else on Article 35? I got my eye on you, Mr. Hegarty. Thank you, ma'am. Go ahead.
If I could, we will continue our practice of having two tables for handouts for anything related to this town meeting, anything on the warrants or the articles. If anybody wants to bring them to the town meeting, they're welcome to do it. It's a lot easier if you bring them to me, drop them off to me by noon time on the Thursday, that would be the 21st, and we'll be happy to set them up. We'll take them down at the end of the night or go from there. We just don't have the space to put anything that is not related to the matters that will be discussed at the town meeting, so we will not allow any, we just don't have the physical space to do it. So if anybody has anything related to the materials that are on the warrant, you're welcome to put them on the tables, but it'd be better if you bring them to me by Thursday, the 21st, and we'll take care of putting them out and maintaining the order that night.
Okay, so Mr. Hegarty is referring to printed materials for display on tables in the lobby of the hall. That is not the deadline, so in his deadline is Thursday, the 21st. For that, that's not the deadline for presenting electronic presentations. That will come later. We don't have that nailed down yet, so please don't be confused among those two things. Electronic presentations will have a deadline so that the IT staff can pull everything together so that the presentations go smoothly on Town Meeting Day. Anything else with regard to the flow of the articles, how they're going to be presented? Anything else with regard to how town meeting will unfold? Other than that, I'm prepared to, yes, Ms. Vanas?
You might have stated it and I might have missed it. If someone is proposing an article for town meeting, a citizen's petition or any other article, and they have an expert available at town meeting on their behalf, are you entertaining that expert this year?
Are you aware of an article that-
Oh, no, no. I know last year it came up.
No, we had, we had an issue last year where someone wanted to have a lawyer speak at town meeting, their own lawyer. And just to clarify on that, I mean, we have town council by statute.
Right.
But as I said last year, and by the way, I spoke to that, to that individual, town meeting last year was on a Monday, the previous week, that person was aware that I wasn't inclined to allow the lawyer to speak, simply because at some point we'll just have a bunch of lawyers that don't live in town at our microphone and that's not where I want to go. So I'm not sure what you mean by expert, but tonight would have been the time for me to hear about that, if anybody's out there that-
No, no, I'm not, I'm not aware of it.
Right.
I'm just asking so that you put it out there, that we are not entertaining that. And the only expert I could think of would be Recreation and they have, they don't have an article, I don't believe.
Correct.
They have a capital article.
Yeah, so I, I'll leave it at what I just said for now.
Very good.
Yes, Ms. Gillespie?
Speaking as a citizen and not representing any board, I mean, committee or commission I sit on, I had a question about the process. And last year, it was maybe because of where the film was, you couldn't see, I know we're trying to streamline it, you couldn't see the selectman's position.
Yeah.
And I think that was fixed by moving the projector a little bit. But my question is, I find great value in hearing if it's a split vote, why, not just who, you know, who voted which way and why. And I also think there's great value in hearing if any of the boards or committees in town have taken a position on an article that's not necessarily, wouldn't be written in the warrant. I think it helps, I mean, we have these boards, commissions, committees who spend time reviewing these and, you know, are experts maybe in the subject that's being presented, and I think it does a disservice for the citizens who aren't always able to be as well-educated as one they would like or we would wish. And I think it provides that level of information and I'd like to see some way of having that still occur within your streamlined timeframe.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I thought you were done. It's a point, it's a point well taken. Certainly, so a couple, couple points in response. Certainly, I realize that the way the screen, it's a big screen and if you're sitting down front, you don't get the full effect, et cetera. So I will ask Tom to make sure that those indicators for selectmen and advisory are at the top instead of at the very bottom, the way they were last year. But I hear your larger point, which is that, you know, to the extent something is not unanimous or comes from another board or committee that isn't selectmen or advisory, that we hear about that, and I will, I will charge the selectmen and advisory with making us aware of non-unanimous votes. And I will call for any other board or committee who wishes to, you know, to indicate their position on a particular article to give that. And certainly, I'm sorry, at no point is it, it's always appropriate for someone to come to the mic and say, you know, what, what was this vote? In case they don't get the information they're looking for, they can certainly ask the question.
I think I did that last year.
You did.
I don't want to do the same thing this year.
I understand.
But also, with the boards and committees going to the mic, sometimes if you're not asked up front, there's a line, conversation is stopped, I think it does value to know that multiple boards or committees or even one has an opinion on a warrant article that's relative to their, to their area of expertise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
So two things unrelated. I hope the first one's not an Emily Lettela moment for me. One thing I've had trouble with this past year is going back to previous town meetings and remembering how we amended an article, amended a motion, and what the vote was, yea or nay. So I don't know if this is your bailiwick, it's your bailiwick, Mr. Purple's bailiwick, but can we, going forward, you know, we've got the warrant on the town website, can we also record the actual results of the town meeting on the same place so that when you go look at the warrant article for ATM 19, you see exactly what happened? This is what the motion was, it passed or failed. And for example, the one that I think Brian amended last year where we reduced the money for the golf course from 300 to 50, I can't tell you how many times I've had to go back and try to find that because I couldn't remember. So I just think this is a suggestion to improve what's on that website, if we really document what we did in a place that's easy to find. Now, I conferred with Mr. Stivers before I came up here to see if he thought it was there, and we think that it's probably in the annual report, but that wasn't an obvious place for me to go look. So I think if I can find it, probably a lot of people can find it. So it's just a suggestion, as far as trying to really make sure, historically, you can go back and look at what we did.
I, I will let Mr. Hegarty speak to that. In terms of bailiwick, that is the town clerk who records the proceedings of town meeting and the results of the, of the votes on each article or any other disposition of each article. So, Mr. Hegarty, do you want to speak to that suggestion?
Do you want me to go ahead and tell you my second one before he speaks, so you want me to come back?
Sure. No, no, go ahead.
So the second one is a little bit more substantive. I've been on advisory a long time and I can't remember whether, when we did this, when we didn't, but there was a time when advisory made the motion for the budget, the main budget article. So I'd suggest that we consider doing that again. Advisory is supposed to opine on all warrant articles, so it's not just a budget, but we spend most of our time on the budget. And we want the audience to know that we really have independently either agreed, disagreed, published our own budget, whatever. We want everybody to know that really we've not rubber stamped what the board selectmen approved. So I actually think it would be healthy for advisory to start making that motion again like I think we did a long time ago, so.
I'll speak to that one very quick before we go to Mr. Hegarty. So I imagine town council right now is suggesting, or is thinking that I put you up to that because he and I had a discussion about that 10 minutes before we started this meeting. I'm going to suggest that, that he and I and you speak, talk about that among the three of us in terms of his interpretation of mass general law and where that takes us on that question.
Okay.
Okay? All right. Mr. Hegarty, on the recording of the results of town meeting and how it is or is not available to the public after the fact, please, sir.
Ms. Cook brings up a very good point. The technical term for that are the minutes of the town meeting. The clerk is responsible for putting together. That is the basis of the filing that we have with the Attorney General. That is what goes into the annual report. We have it, we'll put it up. It's a great point. And at the same time, I'll let you know that we have been going through a process to digitize the last 100 years of town meetings and we're extracting the minutes from that. So excellent point. We'll work on it tonight. We'll get it up there. My own two cents worth, honestly, is it's, there's no reason to have the warrant articles up there at all because the minutes incorporate all the articles in the warrant and the results. So it's kind of a, it's misleading to have it up there. So our, let's say, lastly is annual town meeting. The minutes include all the articles, the verbatim, what's in the motions that are made, okay? The warrant and the motions that are made. So it's sort of like taking the results in the warrant and putting them all together. So it doesn't make sense to have the warrant up there because it's incorporated in the minutes anyway.
So, right, and I would say-
We'll get what she wants up there. It just makes more sense to put the minutes up than take the warrant down because it's only half of the equation.
Look, after the fact, the warrant doesn't serve much purpose at all, right? The warrant is a notification to the public-
Yep.
...of what town meeting will take up.
Yep.
The motions that are made on the floor are the substance of the meeting, and if you've got that incorporated and the result of those motions-
Yep.
-I would think that that is all that anybody needs after the fact.
Yeah, we'll make it work. Great suggestion.
Anything else from anybody else?
Thank you.
All right. With that, I will concede the floor to the Chair of the Board of Selectmen who are in session, and Ms. Brascio, take it away. Continue with your meeting. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, Mr. Semino. One of the last things on our agenda is a consent agenda to approval of meeting minutes, February 13th, 2019, 8:00 a.m., February 13th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
At discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Other matters before the board? I have nothing. Mr. Purple?
No.
Okay.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay.